Today, the 12th of October 2021. This meeting is being webcast with the exception of any business at the council resolves to exclude the press and public because of a likely disclosure of exempt information as defined by the Local Government Act 1972. Okay, okay. That's everything's on okay now. So we go on to apologies.
Chair, we've had apologies from councillors Tina Jones, Hugh Irving, Andrew Thomas and Martin Holland.
And I have apologies from councillor Jeanette James Jones and councillor Cheryl Williams.
Can I give apologies for councillor Tony Flynn, please?
Thank you very much. Are there any others? No, okay. All right, we'll go on to agenda item two, which is declaration of interest.
Members will be aware of the need to declare an interest in any item of business to be considered at today's meeting. If members have a personal interest only, then they may continue to take part in the debate and to vote on any matter. If a member feels that they have a personal and prejudicial interest, then they must declare that in the same way. They must leave the chamber for the duration of the consideration.
In view of that, are there any declarations of interest at all? No, okay. If during the course of the meeting you discover that there might, there might be, please don't hesitate to take advice. So we'll continue to continue with the meeting. Thank you. Unfortunately, my chaplain isn't here today, so we haven't got anybody to take prayers. Unless there's anybody out in the, in councillors who would like to say a prayer. We'll continue with the meeting.
I suggest, Chair, that we continue with the meeting. Once the meeting's opened, it's not actually lawful for us to do the prayer.
Okay, so we'll continue with the meeting. Thanks. So we're on to agenda item three, which is urgent matters agreed by the chair, and there haven't been any. So thanks for that. So we'll go on to minutes, agenda item four, which is minutes on pages five to 10. So we'll go through those from that is the minutes from the 7th of Tuesday, the 7th of September 2021. Page seven. Page eight. On to page nine, which was the minutes. Agenda five, diversity. Page 10 through to page 11, which is the notice of motion, which was agendas and item six. And agenda items seven, which is the county council forward, forward work programme and the meeting concluded at 11:36. Are there any, any matters arising from the minutes from the last meeting, please? Thank you very much for that. So will somebody move as the correct?
Can he?
I'll move it, Chair.
Okay. And Christine, Christine move and Bob, councillor Bob Murray second, yep.
Yep.
Thank you. We're now going on to, to agenda item five, which is the February 2020 flood event. Section 19 flood investigation report. And they're on pages 11 to 202. And this is to consider a report by the flood risk engineer Wayne Hope into the investigation, investigation of the flooding of the 9th of February 2020, copy attached. I'm going to call councillor Brian Jones to introduce. We've also got some from NRW Keith Ivans, I hope I pronounced that right, Keith. And DCC flood risk engineer Wayne Hope. So councillor Brian Jones, please, if you'd like to introduce the report. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So this report this morning, it's a specific report into the Derbyshire County Council flood investigation, February 2020. So it is specific and it is to do with the flood events around February 2020. The main areas that were affected were within St Asav, Brookhouse, Laninis and Tlandristlo. And there was issues at Bodlewithen. The, the previous locations I mentioned were main river events. Bodlewithen was a, was a culvert. There was some flooding. Not, not into properties, but there was some flooding there. So it's included in the report. But St Asav, Brockhouse, Mailton, Innes and Tlandristlo, they were main river flood, flooding events, which obviously come under the banner of Natural Resources Wales. You've already heard that Keith Ivans, the operations manager for North Wales, is with us this morning to, to answer any questions you may have or clarity you may require. If I could ask Wayne Hope if he wants to add anything to that introduction I just made, that, that will be useful. Tony Ward, the head of service, might want to chip in as well. And then from that, we can, we can move from there, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Brian Jones. So.
Thanks, Chair. Can I, can I just say a few words, Chair, very briefly? It's, it's Tony Ward here, so.
You can, yes, certainly, Tony.
Good morning, everybody. Yeah, as, as set out in paragraph 4.3 of the cover report, the purpose of a section 19 flood investigation report is basically to answer three questions. And they are, why did the flooding happen? How likely is it that that scale of flooding could happen again? And what actions are needed to ensure that flood risk in the county is appropriately managed in future? So what this section 19 report looks to do is answer those three questions. For each of those areas where flooding to property occurred in February 2020. As Brian highlighted already, those areas that were looked at were St Asav, Brookhouse in Demby, Clan Inis, Tlandristlo and Bodlewithen. And there's a summary of recommendations on pages 27 to 29 of the pack. But that's all really I wanted to highlight. And myself, Wayne and Keith from NRW are obviously here to answer questions and to add to the debate today. So that, that's all, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
While we get into further discussion, does anybody from offices want to add anything to what has already been said so far? Comment on the report? Okay, well, it's, it's open to you councillors, so. Councillor Merrick Lloyd Davies, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I've got quite a bit to say. Page 19. It's a summary. The final paragraph, the main communities affected by the storms. St Asav, Demby, no, St Asav and Wickfyr, Cameryadog. You omit that every time. And there were serious problems for people in that area. With the homes being flooded, maybe for the third time during the lifetime of this council. So I think we need to draw attention to that. I know that St Asav is larger and is having work done. But the report totally forgets about the rural areas. There's some mentions here and there. There's mention about the stream from Glasgow that over, over tops in St Asav. I'll go through the report if I may. I've tried to be careful to look at what is contained in it. 6.1 on page 23. NRW provide advice on property level protection and property level resistance. But they do nothing to help those people to keep the water out. Just some little things and the water comes in anyway. Wickfyr, that area, Pontaral Goch also have suffered serious flooding and higher upstream as well. Turn to page 26. It's unlikely that formal flood defence would be cost effective to defend a small number of isolated properties. Oh, what a mess. And you're going to look after people who can't get insurance due to flooding. I think that these people as experts should provide assistance to the local taxpayer. Those in the rural areas who've got to fight to get their properties repaired once the insurance has refused because the insurance companies looks for all excuses not to pay out. So I don't feel that that is fair at all. Also on page 27, under St Asav, 1.2. Work with the landowners around the River Elwi to maintain the flood risk management assets. I don't think that NRW and farmers see eye to eye. They're not very helpful to them either. Then we come on to page 28, 5.1. Review the published flood map data for Wickfyr Sef community. Well, unless you ask these people what's happening locally. Because there is a ditch in Wickfyr Sef which is full. It's still running now, flowing. But they don't seem to take much notice of that either. Also, page 35 in the reports. Page 520 from Natural Resources Wales. For level and flow data, second data. Unfortunately, the level gauge at St Asav failed and missed the peak. Well, that's excellent, isn't it? What have they done about that by now? It doesn't say. Page 61. Page 11, the official reports. A number of small communities and isolated properties located adjacent to the Elwi channel. Along which of the middle and upper reaches. The large communities, Slavetelhin and so on, in the maiden lower sections. Well, yes, but you never, hardly ever talk about Wickfyr, Pontne with, Pontodoll. They all have difficulties every time. But they seem to be ignored. And fair play, on page 63, there's a photograph showing Pontaral Goch. It says plaque on laundry cottage, St Asav. Well, that's in Wickfyr Cameryadog. It's by Pontaral Goch, which shows flooding that has occurred to that property over the years. NRW does nothing to help them. Then we come on to page 64. Multiple instances of high levels on the Elwi have been observed since 2012. Notably in December 2020, when the Elwi inundated its flood plain around the lower Demby road section, which is Wickfyr, Pontaral Goch and up towards Pontene with. But it doesn't say that. They just want to highlight St Asav everywhere if possible. And then at the top of page 65, it says, however, details are limited and observations were not fully substantiated during post-event investigations. Well, why? You know, they don't ask people, they don't ask people who've suffered from flooding. They expect them to complain. And these people do make complaints, but they get no support. On page 67 again. Lower Demby Road. Why don't you actually say Wickfyr and Pontaral Goch to make it totally clear? Page 69. The river Elwi at lower Demby Road. Flood warning, Cameryadog, Elwi flood plan from Chapelwood and so on. And then finally, we get Wickfyr, Pontaral Goch and lower Demby Road named there. But once they went informed about the flooding in St Asav and for them. Then we go over to page 70. You've got flood warning area for River Elwi at lower Demby Road. It doesn't show a little joining river that comes down and that one tends to overflow over my cell, we. I'm sorry to take up your time, Mr Chairman, but I think that this is, there's quite a few errors in this report in many places and we need to draw attention to them. On page 105, I think it is. 105, the second paragraph, Glasgow stream started to back up and eventually split out onto Glasgow. What do you expect? Stop this, use this valve. It's going to rise eventually because water won't flow back, will it? So what's the answer to that? I know that Dembyshire did that, obviously, Dembyshire County Council. But I never received an answer. If that happened, what, what did they expect would happen? Then we come to page 111, Wickfyr Sef. No mention of the Vellin ditch. There was an opportunity to draw attention to that ditch there, lower Demby Road. Impacting property to varying degrees. And then it says that after the 2012 event, a small bund was constructed around the south of Penicharu. Well, there are two Penicharu. There's Penicharu Vawr and Penicharu Bach. It's not clear which one. You need to be totally clear where these buns are. And the same with regards to the plan on page 114. It needs to be clear exactly where you're referring to. Then we turn to Chapelwood Community on page 115. Pontaral Goch, of course. They refer to it as the road bridge. And then Glanclen, it's getting a little bit of a mench here. But it doesn't make the problems totally clear. It says Dolbellider was not visited after the flood. But it is possible that the property was impacted by higher river levels. Why didn't you ask? Why didn't anybody ask the land map trust? I phoned them yesterday and I got the answer. The water went into over six inches, water went into the property. And they've got photos of the sludge on the floor of the property. Why isn't this done thoroughly for people living in the rural areas? I won't be very long now, Mr Chairman. I've nearly got to the end. It's a big. Thank you. On page 142. They need to do a little bit more than just lock up the flap. We need a comprehensive report to see how you're going to keep the water back. Then on 6.1. Why won't you help? Not you. It's not the county council, but the NRW. They need to receive funding from government to do something about it. Recommendation 7.1, why not dredge the river every now and again? They refuse to do this every time. We've raised it in the committee in St Asav last time. And they provide all sorts of excuses why they don't do it. If you've got a ditch, you've always cleaned it out. And if you look at page 151, look at the height of the water under the new bridge in St Asav. It shows that the old bridge was much too low. Thank you very much for your patience, Mr Chairman.
Right, I'll call councillor Rachel Flynn, please.
Thank you, Chair. I think Merrick's kind of covered nearly everything I had anyway. But I'll just highlight a couple of things, if that's okay. And so going back to the, the statement in the report, it said unfortunately, level gauge is a massive fault and missed the peak. And just to reiterate, you know, what plans do the council have to mitigate that from, from happening again? And, and it also sort of seems to come to light on the flood, flood task and finish group. And that bureaucracy seems to be playing a part in why riparian landowners can't clear their own rivers. Obviously, they have to source the permits from NRW. And this can sometimes be a bit more of a, a trickier task than it needs to be. So that was one of the things I wondered how the council was going to address that with NRW, please. Thank you.
Okay. Do, do officers want to come back on these points so far or should we, I've got one, two, three more councillors. And I think it might be better if those three councillors put their point across and then officers came back. Are you happy with that? Based on no comment, I assume.
Yeah, I think so, Chair. Yes, let's carry on, I think.
Okay, good. So we'll, of course, thank you, councillor Flynn. Councillor Mervyn Parry, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks for everybody for putting this report forward. I, I actually sit on the task and finish for the we're in. To come to this meeting as yet, we need to finish that one. But from my own, from my own point of view in my ward. NRW and DCC are supposed to be in discussions with residents regarding reducing the risk of the impact on the flooding. Could I ask in this meeting where they're getting up to with the residents, certainly in the rural wards, about contacting them about this? I haven't had much feedback from my residents that anybody's had that discussion with them. And again, just strengthening on Mary Lloyd, Mary Lloyd Davies's comments on the, the small rural areas where there's small numbers, that it's not viable to help protect these properties where possibly we might do in the larger communities. Not doing it in the smaller communities isn't quite what I want to hear or the residents who live there want to hear neither. Thank you, Chair.
Thank, thank you. Thank you very much. Councillor Peter Scott seems to have disappeared at the moment. Okay, so I don't know whether Peter's got any technical problem or whether he's left the meeting just at the moment. So I'll call councillor Alwell Roberts and then if Peter comes back, then we can add him on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Thanks to everyone who have produced this report. I'm a bit surprised that his land isn't featured, St Asav. On the Avon Cloyde, the River Cloyde, and we've had flooding at the same time as St Asav suffered flooding. Properties were affected. I do thank Natural Resources Wales for the work that they've done, especially on Pontropin recently. I'm asking kindly if the water is coming into the River Elwi at such, with such strength. It is going to have an impact on the River Cloyde, which goes down through his land down towards Rill. So is there a risk that things are going to get worse in the Redland Ward and further down towards Rill? That's my question. Thank you very much, Mr Chairman.
Thank you for being so concise. Peter, Peter Scott, I missed you out because you disappeared off the screen, but I'll bring you back in now if you want to make your points. Are you happy?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And I'm sorry, my signal dropped out. It started raining in St Asav and it always puts things backwards for some reason for me out here. I'll turn my video off as well, just in case I drop out again, if that's okay, Chair. Obviously, I'm going to major on St Asav. I know we support Dembyshire as a whole, but my priority is St Asav, which is my ward. The, the points on the Spring Gardens side of the river down at the sewerage treatment work where the river overflowed. I believe NRW are now making repairs to that, lifting the bank up by another 300mm. It was 100mm short before, so that, that's a positive at least. The, the Row Park wall that defends the houses down on Row Park, the north side, the wall finished before the bridge. And again, NRW have thankfully doing repairs to that, making the wall go further along. And also on the south side where the wall finishes under the A55 bridge. The, you can see pictures on pages, I think it's 101, 103, where the, the residents put sandbags to stop the water going up there. Again, I think there is a planning for NRW and okay, I, we have talked to Keith and James Davis on site and discussed all these. And thankfully, NRW have agreed to make repairs to these, these three points on, on the, the report. So that's, that's a positive. Thanks very much for that. But I would like to ask NRW, would they, would they do natural flood management further up towards Merrick's End, up at Glanclen Farm, where we have a farmer, Sam Kenyon, who's willing to have her land put into this natural flood management, hopefully to slow the water down before it gets to St Asav. And I think that's NRW because it's, it's a main river course. And the other one for Dembyshire, there's a manhole that keeps blowing off when the water comes down the hill in St Asav between the Bowling Green and Clissifellin. I don't know if Wayne has got working for, or Alex Babington has got work to, to, to repair that manhole. But otherwise, as I say, I'm very pleased NRW have responded to the work down at Row Park. And if the other two things could be taken up by NRW and Dembyshire, that would be great. But that's all I've got. Thank you very much, Chair, and thanks for bearing with me my computer. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, councillor Scott. Thanks, Peter, very much. It's nice to enjoy a little piece on a bit of an up, an up. So that's nice. We'll go on to councillor Emery Swin, please.
Very much, Chair. Just two very quick questions for me. I would be concerned as a member of the public, if I could go to any valve and open and close it too easily because this report suggests that somebody has opened one valve without authority in the St Asav area. And I wonder what steps are Natural Resources Wales, what steps have they taken to ensure that no one who is unauthorised can get to these valves? According to this report, that added to the problem in St Asav. If we believe what's in the report, and there's no reason not to believe it, of course. And also, and Peter Scott's already mentioned it. It appears that one of the flood defences was built lower than it should have been. And that's odd that that happened and that it was passed by whoever was inspecting the work after it was completed. Because that also allowed water to get, come over the bund. I would love to be able to bring up matters about the flooding in Rithin, but unfortunately, this is about, this report is about the flooding event in February last year. And it doesn't cover the flooding that we had in Rithin. Hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to look at that again. Thank you.
Thank you, Emery. Councillor Bobby Feely, please.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Emery's has more or less said what I was going to say, but I just thought it was worth mentioning that as you will all know, or most of you will know, a year later. that as you will all know, or most of you will know, a year later, there was a substantial flooding event in Rhythyn in the vicinity of Caitholm, Mill Street, Clwyd Street. And I am assured by Wayne Hope that this will also be subject to a report in the near future.
Thank you, thank you councillor Freely. Okay, so there's quite a lot of content here from councillors. So would officers like to start making a response or responses, please? Who's going to speak first?
Thank you Chair. Most of the questions, to be fair, relate to the main river flooding that affected the county last year. So I think it's only fair that this opportunity to bring Keith in to the discussion. There were lots of questions there. I'm not sure if Keith would have had time to write them all down. But can I introduce Keith Ivins, please, from Natural Resources Wales? Keith, are you there?
Hi Wayne, yeah, hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
Yeah, good, okay, great. Thanks everyone, morning everyone. Yes, there was a lot there to take down. I'll try and capture and pick up some of the main issues. I think if I start with, probably if I start with St Asaf, that might be straightforward enough to answer a number of questions that have been raised. So the event we saw obviously back in 2012 was of a certain, a certain extreme event. The new defences were constructed and built designed based on providing a 100-year standard of protection, but with the, including climate change, allowance for climate change onto that. So that effectively provides a one in a 200-year standard of protection as of today to the community. What we saw, the event analysis, in some of the event analysis, as you see, I think it's appendix B that's been included in the papers, is a hydrological analysis of what we saw during Storm Kera. Storm Kera was estimated to be in the region of 102.50 and to one in 300-year event in terms of flow and peak level. So in terms of some of the questions being raised around, well, I think one of the questions there was raised around why did the defence overtop in a particular area in St Asaf? The defence was designed to a certain height and that height was to design to protect against 1 and 200-year events. But there is an allowance freeboard on top of that, which is, picks up any errors associated with the design, the standard, the surveying, the uncertainty around some of the hydrological analysis that goes into that. They're inherent, sort of as part of that design process. We did, immediately after the event, we did one query why there was the overtopping in one particular location. We've had extensive discussions with the designers. We've had extensive modelling, post-event modelling carried out with the designers to understand what happened in that location. And we've resolved that with the designers, which has led to the works that were carried out or are being carried out, just being finished off at the moment in St Asaf. So I think the message here is that, you know, the community of St Asaf has a very good standard of protection. It protected 370 properties that would have flooded otherwise. And there is a, the idea, it was at the event that we saw in Storm Kera was in excess of the design standard or the standard that the defence was designed to protect against. So we can't protect against all events and inevitably we have to, as part of that process that we go through in terms of cost benefit economics appraisal, environmental appraisal, with the funding that's available from Welsh Government, all that goes into the mix when we go into designing a new defence. So I hope that sort of helps to answer that pilot question. There was another question that was raised around the failure of the water level recorder in St Asaf underneath the A55. So that is, that did fail at the top end. So it's, the type of equipment there, installed there is something called a pressure transducer. And they are set with an upper and lower limit. And what happened was it exceeded the upper limit of the pressure transducer. That has now been replaced, well, that is still in place, but an additional downward facing ultrasonic level sensor is actually situated on the new Spring Gardens bridge. So that's been replaced and we've got an additional sensor there that allows us to monitor water levels if we need to. And that also feeds into the flood forecasting model that we have for the Elwe. Just trying to go through some of the other queries here. Yeah, the issue around protection of rural communities and weak fire around Low Demby Road, that area. That area was, as part of the St Asaf scheme, it was looked at to see whether the, some of the properties along that area could be included into the scheme. At that point, it was decided that it wasn't, it was decided that it wasn't possible to include those. It would make the scheme uneconomical and we couldn't take that forward. So a number of the properties there were offered and provided with property level protection. There's a question mark around, one of the recommendations, with a question around reviewing the flood map outlines in those areas. Over the last 12 months, 18 months, we've been working, Welsh Government have been working with national to update and review and replace the old flood maps that are available. And a new flood map called Flood Risk Assessment Wales was released earlier this year, which looks at all flooding from surface water, river flooding, non-main river flooding, all in one location. And that piece of work was completed earlier this year. So we haven't, up until this point, we haven't reviewed those outlines in any great detail because this other piece of work has been, was running to very tight deadlines set by Welsh Government for us to deliver this flood, this replaced flood map. Ultimately, that was also feeding into the new flood map for planning as well. So there was obviously very tight deadlines linked with those two pieces of work, national pieces of work. So that is on our list in terms of recommendations, that is down into our delivery within one to five years, medium term sort of delivery. So it's on our plan, we have, and it's still in the process of being, will be looked at. Property level protection, I think, was raised around, we have, again, that's in our one to five year sort of recommendation task, we have, all the recommendations in the report have been split up into short term, which is try and rectify within a year, medium term, which is one to five years, and then longer term ones, which are the more challenging ones to address. I think there's some, the property level protection, we have a pilot that we're running in Planby TH that we're going to try and look and see how that works. And we will be looking at a number of other communities, more rural, smaller communities, who may not benefit from the possibility of a larger scheme, where we might be able to look at other alternatives, property level protection being one of those. Inevitably, it is always difficult in smaller, more rural communities to achieve the cost benefit to address and design a sort of a scheme, a larger scheme, which is why we have to look at other options as well. And unfortunately, the way national prioritisation or prioritisation across even North Wales takes place, we do look at trying to achieve the greatest level of protection or greatest number of protection for the greatest number of properties as we can. But, and so that's, that's why you'll see that priority or larger communities will tend to be addressed before individual property.
Thank you.
In terms of the, I think there was a mention for Emrys around the valve or in, I think you referred it to as the valve in St Asaf. It's not, it's not actually a valve, it's a, it's a flapped outfall. So it was actually the, I think referred to, the flap was lifted and held in place. So it's a gravity fed flap, so it requires the pressure of water behind it to push it open to allow from the glassoid stream out. We have increased our inspection regime around that to make sure before, during and after events, that make sure it's working as it should be and hopefully there's no any interference with that going forward. I'm trying to think now. Councillor Peter Scott, NFM at Glanfrain Farm, we have visited the farm and discussed and spoken with them about their plans, which, you know, I think it's very positive. It's just unfortunate at the moment, the window for NFM funding for, at the moment is closed and there's no grant funding available at this time. So I think, you know, that there's, we recognise it's the positive nature of it. It's just that at the moment, there's no opportunity to fund what they're proposing at this time. But, you know, that's not to say there won't be any funding in future. So I think hopefully, I will, I know you've sent an email into NRW requesting a bit more detail on that. So I will prepare a bit more, a fuller response to you and send that directly to you. Hopefully that will help in explaining things. I'm just trying to think now where else.
Can I just intervene in a minute? Just quickly, councillor Roberts, Alwell Roberts, mentioned the risk in Rhythland which running through the Clwyd and further down towards Rhill, for instance.
Sure.
Is there any comment you want to make about that?
So at the moment, the area around Rhythland, that still forms part of the D and Clwyd strategy, which we, there's no, there is, there is the risk, I suppose, an increasing risk in light of climate change. The, I suppose down in Rhythland, you have the dual risk of tidal and fluvial, as you well know. So there is, as part of the Clwyd strategy, looking at the tidal risk to the area. And that is ongoing at the moment. We've done a review approximately two years ago that satisfies us that at the moment, everything from a tidal perspective is where it should be. But I recognise, obviously, if we are looking at an increase in storms or increase in fluvial flows, that piece of work will have been considered as part of the work in St Asaf and would have been considered as part of the additional work that was carried out down towards Rhythland. Possibly it's something I'll need to pick up with councillor Roberts in more detail after this. I think probably might be the best thing. The issue of insurance, I think, you know, we recognise that those properties that have been affected by flooding do get affected by insurance and increases in either premiums or the amount they have to, they have to pay out before the insurers will provide additional funding to repair. I think it's, we would always say, you know, if you're in a, if you live in a flood risk area, if you have been affected by flooding, then discuss with the insurers, obviously. Also get in contact with the National Flood Forum, who are a national charity, who would be able to provide independent advice. But also there's the flood res scheme as well, which should help to provide any queries or any difficulties, people having difficulties regarding insurance. It's up to an individual insurer, obviously, if they choose to insure anybody and they will consider that risk associated with it, they won't necessarily even look at NRW's flood maps. They will have, make that decision themselves and they will also, we're not involved with how they determine their premiums either. So yes, it can be very difficult for people and challenging for people. But I think that's probably something out of our, out of our control, in all honesty.
Could I just have answers to my questions if I need to remind you?
Flanninys, Keith, Flannis, Flanninys, from councillor Mervyn Parry, which is specific to the report, it is in the report, the event at Flanninys.
Yeah, what I was after there really was the rural area. And we're not getting attention, we were a bit, much bigger area. How does that, how do I put that over to the residents? And also the communication between NRW and DCC to the residents of how they can help them. It says in the report that they will, on page 29, will, and Natural Resources Wales continue to have discussions with affected residents regarding measures that can be carried out to reduce the risk and impact on flooding. Having spoken to residents, I don't think any of this has happened yet. And this is February and we're now in October. So I'm just wondering what is the plan, if there is a plan to discuss it with these people in the rural areas? It's great to see this work being done in St Asaf and the jobs are getting ticked off and the things doing, but nothing has happened in Channanist, just putting that one forward. Thank you.
No, and I think, I think that is on that, in that, within, Flanninys is within that medium term recommendations list that we've got to address between one to five years. I think we do need to do more in terms of that community in particular. I'll certainly take that away. I think it's difficult, it has been very challenging, as everyone knows. You know, we had the flooding on the 9th of February, we were all thrown into lockdown on the 23rd of March. Many of us and all my staff were all working from home, homeschooling. And I think we have to consider, it's not an excuse, but we have to consider all these recommendations and the work that has been achieved and all the things that still need to be achieved in that context of working through the pandemic and the restrictions and the challenges that we've all had in that respect. And I don't, that's not just our staff, that's also the people and individuals who have been affected by flooding as well. That continues to be a challenge. I think councillor Bobby Freely mentioned around work in Rhythyn. We're also seeing challenges around contractors, suppliers, providing information and getting information from consultants and so on, who were also in lockdown at the time, was very difficult. Getting surveyors out onto site was also very, very difficult. So I think, you know, we are, at the time, we were following Welsh Government guidelines that obviously had a lot of restrictions on us, on how we were operating, how we would previously have worked. We would have gone out into the community, asked questions, knocked on doors. That didn't happen because we were locked down, but also we were trying to, where possible, both protect our own staff but also protect the communities as well. So we've all had to learn how to do things slightly differently and we're all having to operate in a different way. I think there's probably, there's certainly from what you're saying, Mervyn, I think we do need to do more in Flanninys. We haven't done, we haven't really addressed that issue yet. So I will take that away, it's on, it will be on the list, but it will be in that medium term list for us to tackle. But I can let you know, give you some more detail after this, if that's okay.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much for that. Now I've got councillor Mark Young and I've got councillor, I've got Tony Ward as well. So do you want to come in, Mark, and then I'll ask?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. Can you hear me okay Chair? Yeah, can you hear me okay Chair?
Okay, thanks Mark.
Okay, I'll turn my camera off in case. Just a couple for Natural Resources Wales and then one for Dembisher. So Natural Resources Wales, in the report, it talks about floods being in every 100 years, 200 and 400. So when we've had five So when we've had five floods in the last 20 years, how much weight do you give to them figures? Because it does seem strange. So like your response, I guess, has it got any worth anymore? Because we are certainly having annual flooding. So when you quote a few hundred years, it, it doesn't seem right to me. So that's one. In the Brookhouse area, you, you've done a report, so two questions on that. I know a few years ago, there used to be flood wardens for the area and then they were removed. So should they come back now? So that's one question. We used to have them. You've removed them. We're having more flooding. Shouldn't we bring them back? And until you've done the site visits in Brookhouse and other areas, and you've done the survey and you've agreed what needs doing and it's costed. We can't then chase for the funding, whichever way, whether it's government or internal funding or shared funding. So what's the commitment on when will the surveys happen? Because obviously every winter's a risk. So what is your plan for doing the surveys? And when you do the surveys, can you involve local members? Because I think it's important to give comfort to the residents to let them know that's happening. And then to Tony Ward and the chief exec, we, I've touched on this before with Tony. Obviously it's not just about the flooding, it's about our response. And if we've got people going out to St. Asif, Prestatten, offering emergency accommodation and sandbags, et cetera, et cetera, that should be happening straight across the authority. So a commitment of Tony to meet me to make sure we get that part right. Because it's really important that everyone gets that consistent support from the authority. So just them points, please, Chair. Thank you. Jock about.
Thanks very much for that. Do you want, do you want to come in now, Tony, on, on that particular, particular point?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, just that and a couple of other things, I guess. And there's a lot of questions there today generally, obviously. And I just wanted to thank Keith for, for trying to cover as many of those as he can. One point I was going to make was just really an offer to see if there was anything that Wayne wanted to add in terms of any of those questions in, in a minute. And I would, I was going to respond to the comment made by Emrys and Bobby about the, the floods in January 21. And, and they're both right. There is a separate report. Section 19 report looking at that, those flood events. And if my memory serves me correctly, that's, we're due to come to scrutiny later this month with that report. And then it will be coming to council later on in the year too. So just to assure you really that that is covered. And you will get an opportunity to discuss those events in, in detail very shortly. In terms of the, the specific question just raised by Mark, yeah, I think although not specifically covered in this report, it's obviously connected. And the council's response to flooding, both from an emergency response perspective, which I lead on. And also from a recovery perspective, these things are things that we are currently discussing in our strategic emergency management team. chaired by Graham, because, you know, the, there, there have been things that we've kind of tried and done recently, which we think we can learn from. And I think Mark's point is correct, that what we need is a clear and consistent approach to what we do and when we do it. So that's something we're working on currently at the moment and we're discussing. So Mark, that, that will be something that's, you know, will be, will be clarified and, and communicated once we, once we, we've got, we've finished that discussion. Wayne, I don't know if there's anything at all that you feel like you need to, sorry, I should leave that to you really. I'm not chairing the meeting. I do apologise.
That's okay. Can I, before you go to Wayne, the chief exec Graham wants to make a comment on, I think, some of the issues that Mark raised. So Graham.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, only to, to echo what, what Tony said in response to councillor Mark Young's question. The response to the flooding is really an emergency planning issue. And Tony's explained that we're, we're in the process of reviewing our emergency planning response in some areas, learning lessons, et cetera. And so there will be a, a, a report brought back to, probably to all members at some point once we've bottomed out some of those existing amendments to our, sorry, some amendments to our existing practices. But I will be briefing Mark, councillor Mark Young, because of course Mark is the lead member for emergency planning at this current moment in time. So I'll be providing Mark. And I think we've got a date in the diary, Mark. I can see thumbs up. So you'll be getting a briefing off myself in the not too distant future. And then we can decide how to take that further in terms of engaging with the wider membership. But I thank, thank you for the question, Mark. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks very much, Graham. Do you want to add anything at this stage? Venus, Tony passed the ball to you earlier on. Wayne, do you want to come, come, come back with anything? I've got two other speakers after that, which is, I've got Emrys Wynn and I've also got councillor Peter Scott.
Chair, sorry to interrupt, but I don't think my question was answered.
So much, yeah. Okay.
Chair, would you allow me to offer some thoughts on that? I think Rachel, just looking at my notes, I think you, the point you made was around bureaucracy in terms of the, well, I suppose this is really something that Keith might want to come back on. See, your, your comments are about bureaucracy with NRW in terms of riparian landowners and getting permits to do work. This is something that's been discussed in the task and finish group that's been set up chaired by councillor Hugh Williams. So he may also want to make a comment on that. And there were, there was a bit, quite a lengthy discussion about that. And I think so commitment to, to providing additional information or further discussions, Keith, or simplifying the, the, the communications around that process, if you like. But probably better, Chair, if, if Keith and/or councillor Hugh Williams comments on that, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Do you, do you want to come in, Keith, on that issue?
Yeah, sure. So yeah, flood risk activity permit. So flood risk activity permits are there for any works on the main river or within either, anything that goes within a certain, I think it's about seven metres of the riverbank. Any structure that needs to go over or under the main river requires an active flood risk activity permit to determine whether or not anything, any activity that is being carried out, what, what impact it has on flood risk elsewhere, but also in terms of the, it considers actually the environmental impact in terms of impact on fisheries, biodiversity, ecology, geomorphology, et cetera, of, of the channel and the, of the, the river system. So the, there is a, a, a process that, a permit that needs to be applied for, to, to do that. And if anybody wants to be working in main rivers, then that's, they would need to come to NRW to, for that. If they were working in non-main river, then that would be issued through the local authority. So that, there is a, a discussion, I think, probably a lengthy discussion that's had around one of my colleagues, one of my team leaders, Ryan Knowles, who's on the, the task and finish group, sort of the, 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 looking at options and sharing. And I think it is a, it is a bone of contention in terms of the process that needs to go through. But it is a legal, a legal process that has to be followed. And it may be that it's a, a conversation on the phone and depends on, all depends on the scale of the works that's being proposed by the landowner in terms of what actually they need to, what evidence or what information they need to provide for that permit to be issued. So I think it is, there's nothing, it is, it is really a case by case sort of process, but it is a legal process that has to be followed.
Okay, thanks. Thanks very much. Are you, are you happy with that response, Rachel?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
All he wanted to know. Okay.
Chair, there was a couple of questions on mine, just outstanding, please. And the, the, just the, the main one, we used to have flood wardens in these areas which are flooded, they've been removed. Should we get them back? And what's the plan on surveys? Because we can't move on till the surveys talked about have been completed. So what's the timeframe on, on them appropriately, please, them two?
Okay, if I pick that up. So you did mention around statistical stuff around floods as well, the sort of 100, 1, 200, et cetera. And so it is a, it's a, it's a misleading, it can be a misleading terminology. And we need to remind ourselves around that and how it's used. So a one in a, a one in a hundred year event effectively is, in, in terms of, think of the national lottery. You have a 1% chance of it happening in any one year. So it's a, it's, it's just a statistical terminology. So a, a 200 year event has a half a percent chance of it happening in any one year. So it's not to say it's another hundred years, we won't see that. So there is always a, a chance, a, a, a chance of it happening in any year. And what we are seeing is that with climate change, some of those, what, what, the frequency at which we, these events, these larger events are happening, do seem to be shorter between each event. So whereas we might have seen one of these events in, in sort of, well, have five, six, seven, eight years, more, even more between these sort of scale events, they're becoming more frequent. Or this is what it feels like and it appears to be happening. But and, and understandably, you know, climate emergency and that's ongoing. We, we may well see that frequency happening more and more. So we do need to understand that and prepare people for that. And in terms of Brookhouse, Brookhouse is a diff, is a, is a very difficult one. And because I think we did have, you're right, we did have wardens there previously. It relies on individuals being willing to be a flood warden. And I think at the time, the, I think we, we lost some, some flood wardens, some weren't necessarily willing to carry on or moved away from the area. It's something I can certainly pick up and have a discussion with my warning informing team. And we can approach the residents there and see if it's something that they would like to, they would like to be interested in picking up and establishing again. And that's certainly something I can take away. I think just a, interesting, Brookhouse is, 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 is an interesting site because I think we've, we've looked at a number of surveys and over the years, because they, they have a relatively long history of flooding to some of the cottages. We've looked at, property level protection has been provided. And there's always probably the age of the properties, the way they were constructed, the location they're constructed. There always seems to be water finding its way, whether it be under the floors, through gravels, et cetera, that. So it's, it's, it's going to be a difficult one to, not to crack that one, I think. You just remind me of the last question, sorry.
No, 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 you, you've, you've covered it. That's fine. And just a, a site meeting with yourself and me.
Oh, and surveys.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, no problem.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for that. Do you want to come back on anything, Wayne, at this point? I've got two other speakers. I've got Emrys Wynn and councillor Peter Scott. If you've got something to add prior to that, then comment.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity, Chair. Nothing to add specifically, but just to reiterate that the report into the floods that happened this January will be going to community scrutiny on the 21st of October. So that flood investigation report will be published soon. And just for members to keep an eye open for that. It is a little bit of history repeating itself, I suppose. Some of the same locations were flooded this year as were flooded last year. And that report will also come to council in December. So there'll be another opportunity to, to discuss flooding across the, the county. There are a lot more locations that weren't main rivers flooded this year compared with last year. So it was a different type of storm. The other thing I wanted to mention as well is that there's a report I'll be taking to the same scrutiny meeting regarding Rill Cut and Prestatten Gutter. They, they weren't a source of flooding in February last year, but there's always a clear and present danger there. So yeah, just to make members aware of those two reports, it will be in the public domain quite soon. Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne. Councillor Emrys Wynn and then councillor Peter Scott, please.
Yeah, I've got my, I've got my hand up as well.
And then you, Hugh, come in. Okay. Are you there, Emrys? Okay. Peter, do you want, do you want to come in?
Yeah, certainly, Chair. Thank you. It's just a matter of listening to Mark Young talking. The fact I forgot to mention that we walked around Chrissievallin with Mark in St. Asif. And the Derbyshire Council now has got waterproof airbags in Chrissievallin. They've put waterproof systems to the doors and have a store of sandbags in Chrissievallin that the Derbyshire will come out and place if we have trouble again with, with water down there. So again, that's a thank you to, to Derbyshire, really. Another one for Mark, the wardens in St. Asif never stopped when we were told we should do. We just kept going because we knew we might get flooding again. So we still have a flood warden system in, in St. Asif. And just a quick one on the one in 100, 150, one in 200. It was another flood nine days after Storm Kiara. So we have a two in nine day event now. That's just food for thought. That's all it is. Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Peter.
Sorry, sorry, Chair. I was, I was muted. I was asking you to let Hugh Owen Williams in first because he's been waiting a while. When Rachel Flynn was actually speaking, then if I can come in after, I'd be grateful.
Have you, have you got something to add now, Emrys? Or have you?
Well, simply, all I was going to be asking, referring back really to the, to what I call the valves, which I understand to be flaps. I'm reading from page 108 in the report, pack 58 in the, in NRW's report. It does say, at some time during the event, an authorized opening of a flap took place. And although Walter Levins, well, that's, that's detail. It must be understood that flood defence assets are designated, designed to, to a specification which strictly operates with strict operating regimes. And any unauthorized operation of such assets can be extremely detrimental to people, property and infrastructure and potentially life threatening. I think that paragraph itself merits a process to be put into place where such incidents are less likely to happen. And I would suggest possibly NRW's incumbents on NRW to put warning signs nearby to ensure that only the appropriate person should be addressing any issues concerning these flaps or valves. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Emrys. Do you want to come back and increase on that? Or shall I go straight to councillor Hugh Williams?
I'm happy to carry on.
Have it going. Councillor Hugh.
Thank you, Chair and the Emrys. Yeah, I'm chairing the, the task and finishing group for the, with all the National Resources Wales, Welsh Water, Wayne, the union, NFU. It's the first time, I think, in history, what we've all sat around the same table and we've all started listening to each other. It's been a lengthy process, but I think it's been a good process. And I think lessons will be learned. We've got a long way to go. But I, I am so glad to report that we are getting there slowly. And it, it's important that, you know, members who have been selected from the mass in, in their community, well, they attend these meetings as well. And then everybody can know what's going on. But we look forward to it coming back to scrutiny and then giving you a full report in the, in the scrutiny when it, when it comes back. But I'm really confident that it's so good to see everybody around the table talking. There, there's been some hostile conversations in the earlier meetings, but tempers have cooled down. And I, I do feel what we are getting there. So thank you, Chair.
Yeah, it's a good, good, good to hear. And it's always good when people are able to sit around the table and take, take from each other and take the flat from each other as well. It's, 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 that's good. Now I've got one other speaker, which is Merrick. So Merrick, are you, are you about to round up, round off this, this debate now?
Yeah, come on, we're still getting it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just to draw your attention maybe to the comment by councillor Emrys Wynn. What we discovered in Cammera, Cammera, if you put a sign up, they will do something contrary to what the sign says. You know, with regards to tipping, you're drawing attention to the problem. drawing attention to the problem. And it could create more problem than it was previously. But of course, it's up to the experts, Keith Ivans, with regards to the best way forward there. Just to respond to some of the answers I received from Keith, if I may, there were a great deal there, I know. If you would be so kind as to look at them in when he returns to the peace of the office, to see whether it's possible to do anything about the errors and the wrong information contained in the floor report, I'd be very thankful. And I will send him a letter listing everything that we've discussed when I have a moment. Thank you very much.
That would be very, very useful. And I've got one final speaker, which is councillor Christine Marston.
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, I've been listening to the debate and it's all been very good. Looking forward, looking to the future, you know, what are officers from DCC and NRW going to do about sort of addressing future flashpoints? Obviously, we have seen, well, me personally, has seen in my ward, the loss of Llanach Bridge in February of this year. You know, water has this habit of moving around and flashpoints being moving. So instead of just addressing what's been flooded and what's been a problem area, are we looking holistically at our county and sort of saying, well, yes, this is how we to look at the whole county and where flashpoints might be happening. Because things like the loss of Llanach Bridge has been devastating for my community, not socially, but economically as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Anybody want to come back on? Any officers want to come back on that at this stage?
Yeah, Chair, if I may, regarding flood risk across the county generally, clearly it's something that's of interest and concern for both the County Council and Natural Resources Wales. But the natural flood management project that we're looking at is, looks at the catchment. So that's the Clwyd catchment, which includes the River Clwyd and the River Elwyn, also the River Dee, as a separate catchment, but looks at it holistically, looking at ways that we can hold flow back in the upper parts of the catchment, which might have some benefits to communities downstream. So it's, we are very proactive. But we have to bear in mind that, as Keith alluded to, with the impacts of climate change, things seem to be getting worse and not better. So, you know, there's only so much we can do to counteract nature.
Okay. I think the only other thing I'd add to what Wayne said there is that, you know, we are, where we can, we are, we've got programmes, medium term plans, long term plans, that are sort of five, 10 years ahead, looking at in a number of our defences and our existing schemes, and looking at their current standard protection. And with the latest climate change projections, we are reviewing those and seeing, are they still fit for purpose and fit for purpose for now and in the future. So certainly where we are looking to do either any improvement works or upgrades, the impact of climate change will be considered as part of that. And the predicted increases in flows and levels are factored into that. As I said, it's a, it's a, it's becoming more and more of a challenge, I think, in terms of trying to address issues or events, the damage that's caused from flood events that have taken place, but also trying to also plan for the future and get ahead of the curve and be proactive and get things in place before something happens. And that's always a challenge.
Okay, thanks. Thanks very much. Tony, Tony Ward, he's got one final comment to make, I think.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I mean, it's not relevant to this report, obviously, but it's relevant to the question. We are also in the process of constructing another coastal defence scheme at the moment to address that, you know, that risk of ongoing flooding in future. And we're looking at developing two potential additional schemes for Prestatton and Rill at the moment. So that's part of our overall strategy, if you like, looking at future flood risk. But as I say, I hesitate to mention that because there's a danger that we then start to talk about all things flooding instead of this specific report. But I just thought it was worth mentioning briefly. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Tony. Merrick, one last comment.
Thank you. Just to support everything that councillor Christine Marston said, the vice chair of the council, in the future, Pont Llanach, looking forward to having a comprehensive report from Keith regarding what happened during that flooding event. There was terrible flooding down there, but it was the River Clwyd. And that's why I didn't mention it, even though it's a pain for me and for the people of Cheltenham that there's no bridge there. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Can I just thank everybody for the, for the discussion, the debate? It's been very, very useful. So there's a lot to come out of this report. So we've now, I'm going to ask councillor Brian Jones to, to read out the recommendations. And hopefully you'll all be satisfied with the way the proceedings have gone this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. If I can just jump in quickly and say, give my thanks to Keith Ivans from Natural Resources Wales, as ever, to Wayne Hope, a man who knows his, he knows his work inside out, and the support from Tony Ward, and also the comments made by Hugh Williams about the task and finish group. I think that is something that needs to carry on. It's only got a short lifespan. It needs to carry on, that group. If it morphs into a different style of group, or whatever it may become, it needs to continue into the next council. So I'm sure Hugh Williams has got, he's got that in hand and will take that forward. So the recommendations are at 3.1, that members consider the flooding investigation report and provide feedback and comments, which you have done, members. So thanks for that. And I'm sticking virtually to what the report was about. And 3.2, that the council seeks assurances from Natural Resources Wales, that the recommendations identified in Natural Resources Wales flood investigation reports will be carried out. And I know as the first line of attack on that, Mr. Hope will be there on that front line with Keith and his team at Natural Resources Wales. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thanks. Thanks very much, councillor Jones. So you've heard the recommendations. So we need a, we need a second of thought for that.
I'll second, Chair, if you want. Peter Scott.
Thank you, Peter, very much. Everybody, I presume everybody will be in favour of this report. And so we won't take a vote. We're just considering the discussion that's gone. Everybody's in favour of the report and the recommendations being taken forward. Thank you. Thank you, councillors, very much. Thank you. We're going to go straight on. I think we've, agenda item five, find my glasses, six, sorry, couldn't find my glasses, which is a notion of motion put forward by councillor Paul Pennington. So councillor Pennington, if you would like to put your motion forward, please.
Yes, thanks, Chair. Can I just point out, this is a motion on behalf of the Plaid Cymru Group. I'm just the deliverer of the message, as it were. It's a very brief preamble. Don't worry, it won't keep you long. So I'm sure you all know there's a significant care crisis at the moment. There are currently around 120,000 social care vacancies across the UK, which equates to around 8% of the total workforce needed. Under the post Brexit points based immigration system introduced in January of this year, most social care workers do not qualify as skilled workers. And so international candidates are excluded from applying for those vacancies. Pre Brexit, European nationals made up 5.9% of our social care workforce. Whilst there are a number of reasons care staff are in short supply, for example, low pay, long hours, the significant pressure of working through the pandemic, Brexit is clearly the most significant. The motion therefore is, in order to reduce staff shortages and to ensure our most frail and vulnerable citizens are properly cared for, this council writes to the UK government asking that social care workers are urgently designated as skilled workers so they meet the entry requirements of the post Brexit points based immigration system introduced in January 2021. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor. Do we have a second for the motion, please?
I will, Chair.
All right. Sorry, who's seconding?
Councillor Emery Swin. Yes.
Bobby, you want to?
Yes.
Response, please.
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thanks to Paul. And as he points out, the Plaid Cymru Group, although I just think of it as you, but I'm sure it is the whole group. Thank you for bringing this notice of motion, which highlights the current alarming shortage of social care workers. The legislation you refer to is yet one more obstacle to add to the difficulties of recruiting and retaining social care staff at this time, not just here in Dambisha, but across Wales. In answering, I'm going to take this opportunity to have what I might call a bit of a rant, and say that I am absolutely enraged that governments in both Westminster and Wales have allowed this to happen. I personally am sick to death of hearing about how valuable the social care workforce is, and how they deserve more pay and better conditions when nothing is really done to put this right. I must say, I empathise with Greta Thunberg when she referred to there being too much talk and a lack of action. And she referred to blah, 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 rather than action. It is absolutely outrageous that social care workers are not designated as skilled workers and as a consequence, do not meet the entry requirements of the post Brexit points based immigration system introduced in January 2021, referred to in your notice of motion. However, although I agree wholeheartedly with your sentiments, Paul, well, and Plaid Cymru, in terms of actions, you are a year or two behind in putting this forward. Although I am pleased this motion has given me the opportunity to inform members about the hard work that has gone on in the background as soon as we learned of the government's intention. DCC officers, cabinet members as far back as 2019, were engaged in discussions with Welsh Government and the Home Office on this very same point. Through the Welsh Local Government Association and the Association of Director of Social Services, Cymru, we contributed to and endorsed the Welsh NHS Confederation Policy Response to the UK's government's Future Skills Based Immigration System, the White Paper, which was in September 2019. The report highlighted that the new laws would have a negative impact on the social care workforce, which was already experiencing serious shortages and difficulties in recruiting new staff. I would be happy to share this report with all the members following full council today. In addition, our own director of social services, Nicola Stubbs, in her role as president of the Association of District, sorry, not district, of Directors of Social Services, Cymru, at that time, issued a press statement in September last year, calling for social care workers to be included on the shortage occupation list. Again, I would be happy to share a copy of this with all members after this meeting. Despite all of these efforts, the new immigration system was introduced without designating social care workforce as skilled. And I am not hopeful that Dambisha alone, now calling on the UK government, would have the desired effect. However, I must point out that even if these changes you refer to were made, whilst it might help a bit, it would not address the many and complex issues facing social care across all of Wales, and indeed, the whole UK. I would like to give you my assurance that DCC, through officers and members, are working with Welsh Government and Westminster on the bigger issue of how we have a social care system which is dignified and sustainable, and acknowledges the valuable role of all those who work in the sector. That's my answer. Thank you. Thank you, Plaid Cymru Group and Paul Pennington.
Thanks, very much. Thanks very much. Can I ask Alan Hughes to make a comment, please?
In my professional life, I work in the care sector. All are struggling to recruit. A few of them are starting to offer more money, even so it will take time to recruit and train workers. It can take up to two months sometimes. There is a care crisis right now that needs addressing urgently. Care staff who work with learning disabilities, emotional behaviour difficulties, mental health, they're a special breed, and we need to look after them, not burn them out with overwork. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor. Councillor Glenn Swindler, please.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for that, Bobby. Much appreciated. Yeah, the work that some of our own staff in DCC have done has saved the system from crashing completely. You know, that is, it's been fantastic how members of our own council have gone on to, you know, to do this work. And I thank them really from the bottom of my heart for that. This is, we are talking here about the most vulnerable people in society. It's not just the social care problem, it is a social problem. And I urge everybody to support this motion, please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yes, I'll reiterate what Bobby has said. Thanks for that, Bobby, in the statement. And it might be good to actually, for your offer of sending out the communiques to councillors, that might bring things.
I'll certainly do that following this meeting, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank. Is there anybody else who wants to make any comments before we go to the vote?
Can I come back, Chair? I can't find the button to put my hand up there.
You can, Paul.
As I said, I agree entirely with what Bobby said and other members who've spoken. I do think there's a point, however, of our popping our heads above the parapets publicly, acknowledging there's a care crisis that can only be addressed in the short term by Westminster Action to allow people in to do these jobs. I will quote Bobby and Greta Thunberg. Otherwise, we're at risk of being blah, blah, blah. We're talking about the crisis and doing very little about it. I know that Boris Johnson is unlikely to write back and say, you're right, Paul, I'll do what you suggest. But I do think we need to sometimes say what we think publicly and let people know. To quote Randall P. Murphy, at least we tried.
Thank you. Thank you. Right, okay. So nobody else wants to make any comment? Or add to the discussion? Thanks very much.
Well, I'm, if you want me to come back, Mr. Chair, you know, as you rightly say, Paul, it's not going to do any harm. But the reason, you know, I said what I said in terms of writing, is that we have tried with every single organisation across the whole of Wales, including NHS, and got no response. But I know, I don't want to, you know, crush, crush any hopes at all. But I feel writing as a single council now, two years after the event, is probably too late. And I do believe we did absolutely everything that was possible in terms of the lobbying powers we've got to try and get this legislation altered. But I am, I certainly don't think there's any harm in trying, as you say. So, you know, I'm happy to, if this is what everybody wants, you know, it won't do any harm, even if it won't do any good.
May I request a recorded vote on this, Chair?
All right, you want to record it. Before we do that, councillor Rees Thomas wants to come in, please.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Very briefly, I hear everything that Bobby has said. We know our officers have worked very, very hard. And this motion is supporting everything that you have done, Bobby, as lead member. And it's supporting everything that the officers. It's not a criticism of anything that's happened. But as was being said, at least we can feel that we tried to do something, even at this late date. So thank you, Chair. Thank you, Bobby.
I don't know whether Nicola's there. Do you want to come in, Nicola?
I think you covered it, Bobby, as the lead member, very well, Diog.
Okay, we've had a request for a recorded vote. So I'm going to bring Gary in to explain the mathematics of all of that. So please, Gary.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I think councillor Pennington's asked for a recorded vote. I think under the standing orders, we need one, seven. we need one seventh of the members who were present at the meeting to confirm that they're happy for there to be a recorded vote. We have 31 members currently attending. That puts my maths at, it's got to be more than four, therefore it must be five. So if there are five members who are in favour of there being a recorded vote, could they please indicate and then we can move to that? I, one, two, three, four, five, six. There, yeah, we're over the threshold, so there's a recorded vote. So just to remind members that I will read out a register and I will ask members to indicate whether they are for or oblied against an Ertin or abstain a Matall. I'll go through the register. Apologies, I can't see everybody. So if I do read somebody's name out who's not here, I'll take a long pause as, as confirmation of their absence. So just to remind members, the notice of motion is, as set out on the agenda, in order to reduce staff shortages and to ensure our most frail and vulnerable citizens are properly cared for, this council, the UK government, asking that social care workers are urgently designated so they meet the entry requirements of the post Brexit points based immigration system introduced in January 2021. So I'll now go through the register and ask each member to indicate which way they would vote. Councillor Brian Blakely.
Four.
Councillor Joan Butterfield.
Oh.
I believe I recall councillor Chamberlain Jones is absent. Councillor Ellie Chad.
Four.
Conghorith Anne Davis.
Four.
Councillor Gareth Davis. He's not, he's not here. Oryth Merrick Lloyd Davis.
All blight.
Conghorith Hu Evans.
All blight.
Councillor Peter Evans. Not here. Conghorith, councillor Bobby Feeley.
Four.
Councillor Tony Flynn is absent. Councillor Rachel Flynn. I think has left the meeting. Conghorith Hu Hilditch Roberts.
Four.
Councillor Martin Holland's given his apologies. Conghorith Alan Hughes.
Oh.
Councillor Hugh Irving is absent. Councillor Alan James. Councillor Brian Jones.
Four.
Councillor Tina Jones is absent. Councillor Pat Jones.
Four.
Conghorith Gwyneth Kensler.
All blight.
Four.
Conghorith Gennett Lloyd Williams. Not present. Councillor Richard Maynon.
Four. Bobby, write your letter.
Christine Marston.
Four.
Councillor Barry Meller.
Four.
Councillor Melvin Mile.
Four.
Councillor Bob Murray.
Four.
Oryth Mervyn Parry.
All blight.
Four.
Four.
Councillor Peter Prendergast.
Four.
Conghorith Adewel Roberts.
All blight.
Four.
Not here. Councillor Peter Scott.
Four.
Councillor Glenn Swindler.
Four.
Councillor Tony Thomas.
Four.
Councillor Andrew Thomas is not here. Conghorith Rhys Thomas.
All blight.
Four.
Councillor Julian Thompson Hill.
Four.
Councillor Graham Timms.
Four.
Councillor Joe Welsh. Councillor Joe Welsh. I think you're on mute, Councillor Welsh. Okay, I'll come back to councillor Welsh. Councillor Shadow Williams, he's not here. Councillor David G. Williams.
All blight.
Four.
Conghorith Edel Williams. Okay, not here. Conghorith Hu Williams. Not here. Conghorith Emerys Wynn.
All blight.
Four.
Four.
I just could, just double check with councillor Joe Welsh. Tell me, I'll, I'll just count that as, as absent purposes above. That concludes the recorded vote. It saves my mathematics, Chair. Everybody who voted, voted in favour, therefore it's carried unanimously.
Okay, thanks everybody for that. The vote was carried unanimously, so well done. So there's going to be some letter writing going to take place. So we'll, we'll go on to the final agenda item, which is agenda item seven, which is the county forward work programme, which is on pages 205 to 210.
Thank you, Chair. The forward work programme, you'll see there in December, we have a population needs assessment. There are other items which are to go on that forward work programme. I didn't make it in time for publication. There are items that go into the Democratic Services Committee on the 5th of November. So they, they will include a report back on the Younger People's Champion, which was an item at the last council. A report in respect of the Diversity and Democracy Action Plan and a report in respect of the new ways of working for member meetings, which is also an item that's on the Democratic Services Meeting on the 5th of November. And you'll see there in November, in the council briefing forward work programme, that on the 8th of November, we have two items there about engaging children and young people in politics and the county lines issue in Denbysia. And there is an extra November briefing on a date as yet to be confirmed for the North Wales Fire and Rescue Service to bring a, a presentation and Gypsy and Travel Accommodation Assessment.
Okay, thanks very much indeed. And thanks, everybody, for.
Chair?
Oh, sorry, sorry, Julian.
Sorry, yeah, just, just, just two other, a couple, two other ones, just to flag up for advance notice. On the 25th of January, there will be the Budget Setting Report. And on the 22nd of February, there will be the, whatever the wording is, council tax and ancillary matters, which is the formal one where we put all the wordings in to, to issue the, the council tax bills.
Okay, thank you very much for that. So I think that finally concludes our council meeting for today. Can I thank everybody for the debates and the discussion today and, and the patience that everybody has shown. So thanks very much indeed. So we'll close the meeting at 11:40. So thanks very much indeed. Thanks. And it's good to see.